And so let me go sit down and we'll get going.
Hey.
It's just like pictures I can see.
Sure.
Didn't bother me. Other pictures have me just downing tear drops.
Okay.
My twin brother, you know.
Oh. Getting how many pictures done with just the three of us. This little guy's it's time. He's not coming back. Are we ready?
She's she's ready. I'm ready.
This is all. We'd like to welcome everybody to our Tuesday, September twen- uh, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to know all Planning Commission members are here and present um with Wanda via remote.
What? Okay, I can hear you.
Do we have any public comment? Being that there is none, we'll move on. Presentation and reports, Mr. Eggit.
Thank you. I'll just quickly go over what I discussed during the work session. Um, Dutch Brothers Coffee, we anticipate their issuance of their C O L this week. Um, and then hopefully they'll do some kind of a ground opening or a ribbon cutting soon thereafter. We've heard that their training timeline is about two weeks, so we'll keep you updated when they do decide to to open up and get going if they want to do some celebration. Um, Cafe Rio is open for business that I've inquired if they're gonna do a grand opening. I haven't heard back, so I'll let you know if there's anything that way. Um, Raising Canes is framing is starting to come up out of the ground, and Mobeta's is getting close to being completed on their site. Go Barbershop, the next review will be their final inspection. And Take Five Automotive has resubmitted for Planning Commission review on the twenty-eighth of September meeting. And then finally Walmart is going anticipated to go before the city council on the twenty-first for their site plan amendment for the uh distribution center use. And then um Chick-fil-A has their building permit issued for their, or it will be issued for their site plan amendment and their uh building redevelopment, so. That I think that's pretty much everything. Oh, and I forgot to note that the Green Hill Apartments building is um ready for its its final inspection process, so that's everything I have, and unless there's any other questions for me, that's the report.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Eggit. Our consent items, consideration of meeting minutes from August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one work session and the regular meeting. Anybody have any corrections, comments?
Like to make a motion. Will you approve the consent items from August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one with the recommendations that Blair made upstairs?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I didn't hear Wanda.
Wanda?
Wanda, you there?
I think we must have lost her.
All the green light?
Just let it go. Let's.
It looks like she's still here. Yeah, there's enough of us here. Alright.
We're already running behind.
I don't know what to do.
I just texted her.
Okay.
We'll just keep rolling.
Yeah.
Okay, down to our action items.
Read that in the mail.
So. Public hearing to receive and consider comments regarding proposed development agreement language as submitted by Riverdale Commercial Holdings LLC. What?
Turn you up mic to talk about it first.
Mr. Eggit?
Yeah, would you like me to? I'll just do a quick intro on it, and that can cover both A and B, so you can do the public hearing and then move into the discussion on it. Um, the petitioners on this agenda item are Riverdale Commercial Holdings. They're represented tonight by Ted Heap and Paul Willey and even Jake Tate. If AWA Engineering on the project is is here as well. Earlier this year, the state legislature passed House Bill four oh nine that requires all development agreement proposals that within the city go through a public hearing review process before being approved. If the development agreement has any land use ramification or impacts that are requested alterations to the current city codes. This development agreement proposal does have a few of these and therefore has been um set for a public hearing this evening. A public hearing notice has gone out per state ordinance, and it was scheduled to do so on August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission meeting. We've received no public comments from anybody about this request. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, clearly you can further discuss the proposed development agreement and its content and then determine what type of recommendation you'd like to make to the city council and and make sure you have appropriate findings of facts to support that conclusion. City attorney has reviewed this as well as city administrator and the numerous members of staff have reviewed this development agreement, and those conversations have been provided to the Riverdale Commercials Holding Holdings team. Um, this version is an updated version of a previous agreement that that was discussed with staff, so it is an evolving document, I guess, is the point that I'm trying to make with this development agreement document you have, and it 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 very likely could further evolve based on tonight's conversation and other conversations that may follow hereafter with staff and with the city, so. There's no general plan guidance for the request, and you'll see the documentation um as as provided to us, represented in your packet and and was also placed on our noticing uh websites for for the public to look at, so. With that, I think that's enough introduction, and I'll defer to the Planning Commission for you to move forward through public hearing. Thank you.
Like to make a motion. We open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I heard her. I heard her.
Do you have anybody? Wants to speak? Okay.
I move we close the public hearing.
Last second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Michelle, do you want to poll?
I'm like doing it. It's B, right?
Yeah.
She dropped off.
Mr. Spires?
Aye.
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 And just for the sake of clarity, Michelle, that this was relative to the public hearing itself. Just they're closing the public hearing.
We had no comments or.
So now we would be item B.
Okay, consideration to forward a recommendation to the city council regarding proposed development agreement as submitted by Riverdale Commercial Holdings LLC. Mr. Eggit. Mr. Eggit.
Well, I don't I don't have anything more to add really. It's at the if there's any questions of the
Right.
Planning commissioners or obviously motions, whatever you feel appropriate as the chair.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion. We forward a favorable recommendation to the city council regarding proposed development agreement as submitted by Riverdale Commercial Holdings LLC.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This one I would poll.
Yes, please, Michelle, would you poll the commission?
Aye.
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 Aye. Alright, passes unanimously. Action item two, consideration of conditional use permit request for Utah K nine Academy use located approximately forty-five ten south, nine hundred west, suite five, Riverdale, Utah, eight four four oh five as requested by the applicant Carlos. I do not want to butcher this name. Thank you, Mr. Eggit.
Utah K nine Academy is the applicant for this conditional use request at the address you noted. This is located in a regional commercial C three zone. It's anticipated to be uh in in an previously existing building that was one business that is now being diffused into multiple um spaces, suites, in this case, suite five for this request. The request within the C three zoning matrix is for dog or cat hotel kennel, which is the reason for the conditional use. You as the planning commission body are the approval body for this request on the conditional use. And and the ultimate goal is to look for any outstanding health, safety and welfare concerns that may exist in association with this this request and its proximity to the neighboring uses in the general area of the site. The concerns that have been discussed, well, well, any concerns that staff has had has been discussed with Mr. Kubista. Specifically, the animal control officer is supposed to do a a report or a review of the request, and therefore you have in your packet a report from the police department as provided by Sergeant Brandon Peterson, who I believe supervises the animal control officer in their respective duties. So that that is uh a favorable um review comment from him relative to Mr. Kubista's business plan and and use plan for this building space. Your basis for review of the conditional use permit is subject to ten dash nineteen dash five, which is items A through G, so just make sure you kind of look at those. If you have any questions or concerns, make sure it falls within the findings as found in the A through G and 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 how you discuss those concerns with the applicant. Now, I noticed there's a mistake under that where it says relocation carpet flooring business. That's per an old conditional use permit. That's something I should have caught. Obviously, this is not a carpet flooring business. This is a kennel request use, so disregard that language. That's my error. The general plan um has this area listed for planned commercial high uses. The Public Works Director said he doesn't have concerns on this. The Fire Chief did not provide commentary, but the um Fire Marshal did, and he said he has no additional recommendations. The Police Chief obviously says that that there's the attached um recommendation for approval of the conditional use permit. He has no further concerns. I noted a concern. I just said my main concern associated with dog barking during overnight kennel stays. I'm concerned that the dog barking issues may not be attended to and impact the residential neighborhood located nearby to the northeast of this location. Maybe that's not fair to say may not be intended to now that I think about it. That's probably not a fair statement. I'm just concerned that there may be noises that that can emit out of the building to neighboring residences i- in somewhat of a proximity that may be a non-issue. As I said, I would like to know how the applicant will monitor control barking noises so they do not emit out of the anticipated location as requested use. Um, I have talked to Mr. Kubista on the phone. He's already aware of this in the packet, so um he he's more than it. I I can't speak for him, but more than willing to come up and and address that if you have questions about that of him. You can see in the packet a layout of the building space on page thirty-three and thereafter kind of how he'll have the kennels laid out and the spaces, kind of like a a use or an individual cubby space for the different dogs and the owners, um the exercise training area. And then an explanation of of how he'll keep the facility safe and clean and that sort of thing as well from from some of the challenges that come with a large amount of dogs together and in a space training together, so. With that, I think that's everything that I need outlined. I would defer to the Planning Commission any other questions you have of me or Mr. Kubista and go from there. Thank you.
Is the applicant here?
He's right there.
Yes, please.
An address. How's it going? Thank you for having me. My name's Carlos Kubista.
Can you give us your address too for the record?
Yes, my home address?
Yes.
Okay, uh twenty-two seventy-seven West twenty-three hundred North Clinton, Utah, eight four zero one five.
Perfect.
Now, if you're gonna be having uh overnight kenneling?
Yes, sir.
How mu- how many do you anticipate that you might accommodate at any given time?
Fourteen to twenty. So, and a little bit about my background, um spent eight years in the United States Air Force. I I worked right up the street. Um, the dog kennel is just right here in Roy, the Roy entrance. Um, we housed up to ten dogs, so I was in charge of narcotics, explosives and bite work, right? So um everything that I'm giving you is the same setup that we had on base, and um we had our uh vet, our army vet come and inspect that, and we always pass inspections, so I know that sanitation is number one because we can't do the training and the boarding without sanitation because everything needs to be cleaned, so. Um, as far as um in the evenings, I will have cameras with sound as well, so I definitely want cameras everywhere. As you guys can tell, I've spent a lot of time. Um, I've spent probably eight to ten hours at the facility laying out tape and just making sure that everything's gonna work. And the dogs have plenty of space to um stretch out, use the bathroom and all that, and everything's gonna be um connected to trench drains as well.
So these dogs will be unattended at night?
Um, we will do checks on them, though, so just like in the Air Force, we do uh four-hour checks every every four hours, so just to ensure.
In person or over video?
No, in person. Yes, sir. So.
Are you going to be doing training strictly indoor or are you going to be doing some out?
So we will be doing training out and about. Um, okay, so I'll kind of walk you through my um training system. So what what's unique about us and no one else here in the Wasatch Front is doing it is we're a dog trainer. I I'm one of the best out here. Innovative canine, and then I would say us. And especially for northern Utah, I I plan on helping the community train like our dogs better, but so where we're coming from is from a training perspective where most people are groomers. They don't know how to control a dog or train a dog. We are gonna be pushing the training more so because that is my bread and butter. We are expanding to we're planning on expanding to boarding, but our bread and butter are um is our training right now. And then I also did plan on doing a for any active duty uh military members who are on active orders um doing like a special discount for them so that I can get back to the community as well.
Are you having like an obstacle course like similar to the base has, or are you just strictly?
Yes, I eventually do want to get one because I think that's uh kind of like an a wow factor, especially like if you send your dog to me and they're able to do an obstacle course, but currently we don't offer that, but that's why we are looking to expand um so that we can grow our operations because currently it's just me, my wife and my trainer, so we definitely do want to expand.
So how many dogs are you planning on during the day? The same amount as you be kenneling or?
So anywhere from fourteen to twenty, so.
But do you do one-on-one training or do you do just a group of dogs?
So I just do the boarding trains for now. I just had a newborn um couple months ago, so two months ago. His birthday's coming up. But um so anyways, yeah, with the time that I have right now, it's just the boarding trains because the one-on-one sessions just take a lot of time to prep, spend with the clients. I'd rather just pull the dog and work him.
Okay, are there any health requirements as far as the health department goes, as far as vaccinations?
Yes, so currently uh we utilize a online Pro Pets um app, and it has everything in there, so it your email, um they have to upload the three, the Bordatella um H or DDHP, and then the rabies vaccines. Those are the three. Anywhere you go, you have to have those. Yes, sir. And um what's nice about Pro Pets, it it will red flag it, so you cannot um book the dog or intake the dog without um having that paperwork.
Thank you.
Are you looking at any sound mitigation procedures or um anything to minimize sound? Because I know that as I understand it, as as it was explained to us, there is a a building adjacent or a
Is this?
Business adjacent to you.
Right.
So um sound as far as interrupting them during the day, um what are you looking to to resolve any concerns they might have?
Yes, sir. So um that's that's a great, that's like my number one concern. As I spoke with Mike, uh my my two biggest concerns were health and sanitation of the dogs. That's like number one. And then number two is the barking, right? Because I I don't like barking personally, and I know none of us do, so. Um, my big thing is how are we gonna mitigate that? The wall on the north side, uh there was a machinist that used the the business adjacent, so the building or the lot right next to it. So um on this side, we plan on doing the same thing on the back half. And then we're gonna have a wall here as well right behind us, so this is all gonna be walled off and soundproof. Um, now, next, we are looking at possibly enclosing the kennel area as well, so that's completely enclosed, and then it's gonna have two soundproof barriers as well.
How soon um if assuming you are approved tonight, how soon are you wanting to start your business?
Uh, yesterday, no, but um so what we're looking at is probably November to December on timeframe. So I'm currently, I have a, my business has been up and running, Utah K nine Academy. We started on base um with Clearfield and then moved off base to Clinton, so I'm currently in Clinton right now. But yeah, so we're probably looking at like November, December timeframe.
So will this be a second site or you're moving from Clinton to here?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Uh, moving from Clinton to here.
What is the reason why you you chose to move from Clinton? Were there issues or concerns there?
No issues or concerns, sir. None at all. Um, my dogs are quiet. I I so currently we're doing this out of it's a home-based business, right? So it's um my basement, um plus the training room is in the garage, and my my biggest, my biggest thing, my wife gets on me if the dogs are barking, so that's a no-go. Yes, sir. And we do have like other means as well, um via like e-collars or bark collars um to to minimize, but that's like a last, less case scenario.
One thing I noticed about the location, I was just looking at it uh on Google Maps, is it's all asphalt around this building. There's no grass, there's no outside other than asphalt. So uh there's no place really for the dogs to to be outside, uh to, you know, have that at at all in in the building that you that you're taking over. Is that uh a a concern?
So in any way? No, sir, and the what we will be so for our boarding train dogs, they always um in several indoor sessions and then an outdoor session because I love to work on the distractors, um trash can, trash trucks driving past, dumpsters, all that. All the distractors for the dogs. Now, our boarding dogs, clients will have the option to uh pay for walks, so yes, sir.
But that's that's just walks like around the sidewalks and things like that along the street and things like that.
Yes, sir.
Are you only, do you custom, uh specialize with bigger dogs primarily?
All dogs, so I've trained the smallest of dogs. Um, my, yeah, one of my smallest dogs was a eight-year-old mini schnauzer. So, yep, we have all sorts of dogs.
Like to make a motion. We approve the the conditional use permit request for Utah K nine Academy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I again, I would suggest a roll call.
Any opposed?
I would suggest a roll call if you're.
Will you poll the?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Spires?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it, and if you guys ever need your dogs trained, you'll know where to find us. Thank you.
You better hurry. She does have a dog.
Yeah.
She does.
My grand dog.
Okay. Action item number three, consideration to forward a recommendation to the city council for a proposed second subdivision amendment for Parks River Riverwalk PRUD property located approximately forty-three eighteen and forty-three twenty-four South Riverwalk Drive, Riverdale, Utah, eight four four oh five as requested by Kent Hill. Mr. Eggit?
Thank you. Um, yep, Kent Hill is the petitioner on this. He's present here tonight with us, and and we appreciate having him here for this amended subdivision plat. It's two lot. Um, small subdivision amendment request in the Parks Riverwalk PRUD overall subdivision. The actual lots being um requested to be amended are forty-three eighteen and forty-three twenty-four South Riverwalk Drive. The owners of the lots respectively are Kent and Linda Hill and Jerry and Christine Brandon. According to State Code ten nine A six oh eight, we can do internal subdivision amendments now. That's uh per previous uh just this year approved bill that allows us to do that, so that that's kind of a a very um convenient opportunity for individuals like Mr. Hill who are looking only to address two lots within the subdivision. There's no public hearing requirement for the site plan proposal. The amendment of this this uh second amendment is for the property line between lots thirteen A and twelve A. There's a small change there as well as bringing a small um area of real estate outside of the subdivision into the subdivision to be joined to lot thirteen A. That's the other purpose for the subdivision amendment that's been provided to you and is found in your packet within the plat um representation drawing. The general plan guidance for this area is set as residential overlay zone. This request is in compliance with this application on the area within the general plan. The base zoning is R two zoning with a PRUD overlay that's obviously been previously applied per the original subdivision approval. And then, as you can see, the street in front of these lots is Riverwalk Drive, which is a private street. Um, not a lot of comments from from staff. I'll just go over a few things that are more technical in nature. I think Mr. Hill can have his um uh plat specialists work on and look in the comments. If you have any other questions, you could certainly let me know, Kent. Um, but the project address, just location's not shown. The addressing needs to be shown, and again, I've indicated what that addressing is. Approving entity's name needs to be provided on the plat. Still in signature, which typically comes near the end when they're ready to record the mylar that will need to be provided, which I'm just putting there. It's anticipated. There's no date provided or shown that will need typically that's provided at the top under the the description of the the subdivision amendment. The narrative of the project should include a note that proposed our property locate outside the subdivision is being amended into lot thirteen to now be included in subdivision. The narrative that that's there now is just showing that there's an adjustment of the lines between lots twelve and thirteen, so adding a second statement will just further explain what's going on. See if there's anything else. The lot needs to be noted as within the FEMA flood zone A E determination area located within the one percent annual chance flood area. Just some kind of a note somewhere on the drawing will suffice to show that um that's that's something that FEMA likes to have clearly identified, so that if anybody in the future were to see that, they'd know that. Um, Mr. Douglas, our Public Works Director, has no concerns with the proposal. Mr. Marine Commander, our Police Chief, has no concerns. The Fire Chief made a comment that that comment's been since rectified, clarified with him, so so really disregard his comment. There is fire apparatus access already provided here. He just was not aware of it when he initially reviewed this. The Fire Marshal uh says he has no additional recommendations. The Sandy Engineer has um a couple of comments that some of them mirror what I've stated in under plat. Um, referencing the date, addressing the flood plain. Um, he does add one says rear setback line has been shown on the plat drawing. It should be identified. Some notes that he wants added on the plat drawing. He does recognize that the plat closes within the tolerant standards of Riverdale City, so that's like just a thumbs up, and then he would like some language a little bit more established uh for the Riverdale City Engineer Approval Compliance Area. There are some stormwater issues here noted, and and again, I'll I'll reiterate what I said in the work session. I discussed that with the engineer, if that's even applicable in this case. I would contend that from my uh my perspective, I don't think it is applicable. He stated that he's not a hundred percent certain, but he he tends to agree that there's a high likelihood it's not really applicable. And he's gonna talk to the Public Works Director about that to see if that even applies in this case. I don't know that it it will be applicable, so I I anticipate that there's a good chance that could be removed. That being said, I would advise Mr. Hill maybe to talk to Scott Nelson briefly about just those four comments to see if there's any reason for them to even be there. So that'd be my advice on that, but I I my gut thinks that they won't be applicable in this case. Otherwise, you'll see the application from the applicant and the subdivision plat as uh provided, and with that, I defer to the Planning Commission if you have any other questions or comments from me or the applicant. Thank you. And I and I forgot to clarify that this could be um the. And I, and I forgot to clarify that this could be, um, the recommendation could be made tonight. Were it made, one way or another, it would then proceed to the city council at a future date, as early as even, and next Tuesday, we're ready to do so. So with that, I, I defer to the commission. Thank you.
Any questions, comments or concerns?
I don't, um, but I'd make a motion that we approve the. And forward to uh, recommend that we approve a favorable recommendation for the amended subdivision review of. Parks Riverwalk PRUD Second Amendment. Forty-three eighteen South and forty-three twenty-four South Riverwalk Drive, pending any uh. Issues being addressed and corrected uh, as noted by staff. And favor, and forward a favorable recommendation to the city council. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Will you uphold the commissioners, please?
Aye.
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 Passes unanimously. Okay. Consideration to forward. Action item number four, consideration to forward a recommendation to the city council for a final site plan approval for. Proposed Riverdale Apartments Building, property located approximately six ninety west, forty-four hundred south. Riverdale, Utah, eight four four oh five, as requested by Colliers International, Brad Brown. Mr. Eggit?
Thank you. Yeah, as noted, this has been resubmitted and provided to us for uh, the final site plan review by. Planning commission. The address is the six ninety west, forty-four hundred south. And the property currently is uh, old residential home sites that have since been um. Demolished and, and the property currently sits vacant and, and underutilized at the current time. Property is owned by Daniel Phelps. Uh, this matter came before the planning commission on July twenty-seventh for preliminary site plan consideration, wherein the planning commission. Did approve the preliminary site plan for the propo, the project proposal. A public hearing isn't required for the site plan request. And as noted, this would be, just like we did on the last one, a recommendation to city council consideration. Um, with sufficient findings of facts to support your recommendation. The. Property is currently zoned R five, which is multifamily residential. Uh, and the requested use of multiple family residential units is permitted use in the zone as it falls under forty-nine units or less in the site. Um. General plan guidance for this area is set as residential low density. Clear the designation would need to be updated in the next general plan. Since property is already zoned R five and more appropriately be designated as high density multi, multifamily, which we'll, we'll see gets done. We are, as we noted during the strategic planning session, we are looking to do a, a general plan overhaul. Um, as soon as we can get some grant, hopefully, cross our fingers, grant monies to do so and bring some outside assistance and to get that done. So. We're looking to go that direction this coming year. Um. The city staff uh, concerns for myself first, under landscaping. I have discussed this with Mr. Brown as well, but uh, per city code ten dash nine F dash four. At least twenty percent of the project already needs to be landscaped, open space and not eighteen percent is shown on the cover page. He's aware of this and I think if you have any questions for him about that, he could, he could at least talk to that and what their plan is to move forward with that um, concern. And then as you go to. Pretty, it's pretty, pretty clean report from me, I have to say. Uh, under water right transfer documentation, applicant just needs to, this is just a reminder to work with the public works department to provide adequate water rights. For the site per eight dash six S three of city code. Um, under the city public works director, he's noted under stormwater drainage system operation and maintenance plan and B M Ps. Which we have received those. I think he just needs to make sure that the plan i- is appropriate and approved as such to be recorded with the plat. Um, notes intent filed with the state and injection well permit for the storm system that will be on the site. On streets, he puts on-street parking should be restricted due to bike lanes roundabout. Please add no parking signs, remove the note for red paint. Signs required in areas that have snow. Water, provide water usage peak demands and provide what water shares will be used to meet water requirements. Under sewer proposed sewer flows, peak daily and peak, including peak demand time. The police chief says that his previous concerns have, appear to be taken care of regarding on-street parking and he has no further concerns. Police chief notes that he's not seen the water, excuse me, water flow for this that was requested. He wants to make sure we have all the hydrants we need as they are already limited in this area and the location has said hydrant, hydrants are for us. The um, fire marshal seems to, to reate a sim, reiterate similar comments. And that he says the riser room is not identified on the plan. The riser room access in F D C must be visible and accessible. F D C shall be on the street side. An engineer water supply analysis shall be conducted to verify adequate available fire flow. Hydrant location should be closer to forty-four hundred west. Location hydrants will depend on water analysis. A NOX box will be required. And then he says contact Riverdale Fire to obtain approval of location. And I believe that's for the NOX box, Brad. But I'm not sure, but I think that's what he's saying. You may want to check with him on that. Um, our city engineer. Under general issues, he notes that the existing roadway in forty-four hundred south is relatively new road and that it was rebuilt uh, not too long ago. So silo cut will need to be placed from the east building line to the intersection following the repair to the roadway from southern curb to northern curb. And that work item must be placed in the public improvement cost estimate. There is a cost estimate in your document, but basically the engineer is saying that. He didn't feel comfortable signing off on it or recommending it for approval, which really isn't at the purview of the planning commission anyway. That's more of a city council thing. But it's important to know that they're working on that and there is a, an item that needs to be added to that per the recommendation of the engineer. Um, under culinary water issues, he notes some things about the, the drawings of the culinary water vault and the irrigation connections. Um, backflow pressure devices, those sorts of things. He says a stormwater maintenance chart record needs to be created and placed in the improvement drawings for onsite maintenance workers. To follow. Um, and then stormwater manager of the city. And then he says the maintenance chart record will also need to be recorded with Weaver County Recorder's Office, which oftentimes. That maintenance chart record is on the drawings themselves or some other document. It might even be in your storm drain um, maintenance plan. And you might have a table, yeah. So that could be a real easy way to, to cover both at the same time. Um, the application is found thereafter. Uh, fee has been paid. You'll see thereafter, there's the engineer's cost estimate on page seventy-four in your packet. And then you'll see that there's a quick claim deed. The quick claim deed, the reason I included that, um, up to this point, there were. Four parcels, I believe, that were individual. It may, may have been three anyway. Uh, maybe even five, now that I look at all the tax ID references, there might have been five. They've been since consolidated into one parcel. Um, where this has not been previously subdivided. Again, this is another thing that one of the bills this year allows to happen. A little more quickly on behalf of a property owner that owns all the properties to consolidate it and then to get it recorded if it's not part of an existing subdivision. So in this case, this is not part of an existing subdivision. That's the tool they've, they proceeded for that. That's why it's in your packet. Um, let's see. And then you'll see the development drawings found thereafter, the landscape drawings and then the supporting. The supporting imagery for the project site. Um, you'll see some updates that were uh. Have been made following guidance from the design review committee, which was held on this project as well. Um, and. I think with that, that's, I've covered everything and I would defer to planning commissioners. Do you have any questions from Mr. Brown or from me?
I, I just have one question. Noticing that uh, we're gonna be putting up signs along there that say no parking. Um, will there be some notification given to those people who are currently parking along there? So they have a little bit of advance warning that, that this is going to be.
He's right there, Mr. Brown is. Um, as far as the city's position on this, you can, you can come to the microphone, Mr. Brown. As far as the city's position on this, I can tell you what I've heard from both the public works director and the police department chief. They're already illegally parking there. That's not legal parking, the way that they're parking along that right away because of the bike lane that's there. So there's already.
But they've been allowed to park there and nothing is.
Not really, not, not really. They've been advised that they shouldn't, but they do it anyway.
Okay.
Let's put it that way. So it's, it's a continued problem that this will allow a more hard stance on. The, the posture of the parking along there, let's put it that way. Um, as far as notice, I, I don't know that necessarily the property owner, it's, it's their burden. Or responsibility to do that. If, if Mr. Brown or, or his partner feels that that's something they would like to do, that, that could be.
It, it sounds like they've already got notice that they shouldn't be parking there.
They've been advised and they, they continue to do it anyway. Let's put it that way.
Way I see that playing out is, is during construction, you know, they're, you know, that it will not be. Available for parking and so, you know, it kind of will just kind of flow into it once we finish construction and have no parking signs up. So everyone will hopefully be out of the habit by then. So, we can hope, right?
We can hope.
I have a question for you. With all the drought problems.
Should, should he and, oh, say his name and address?
Will you state your name and address for?
Brad Brown, seven nineteen west, forty-three fifty South Riverdale.
Thank you.
Yeah.
With all the drought issues going on and people being really. Oh, what's the word? People are really encouraged to do more.
Zero scape.
Zero scape.
Drought sensitive.
Yeah, drought sensitive. There's a lot of, it looks like a lot of grass and trees and shrubs and plants and. Are you guys looking at maybe tapering that down a little more because of what's happening?
There's actually quite a bit of rock mulch and, and that sort of thing, right?
Right, this is, this, and we've discussed this from the beginning with the city, with that intent in mind. It'll be, you know, mostly a zero scape with some plants and, you know, drought resistant.
It, it's deceptive on page ninety, ninety-two. That looks like grass and sod. It's actually a lot of gravel and rock.
Well, in ninety-five, if you look at page ninety-five.
That, disregard that, that's just, that's just the aerial, disregard the green nature of that. Look at pages ninety-two. Yeah, ninety-two to ninety-four. That's the landscape plan. Specifically ninety, ninety-three.
Ninety-three is.
Would be the key one. And you, you'd have to kind of zoom in to really see it. It's kind of hard on your, your tablets or your devices. But if you zoom in and you look, you'll see that a lot of that is, and actually ninety, ninety-two is maybe even better. You'll see a lot of it is rock mulch on that, that schedule.
So the tree planting, shrub planting, concrete.
Yeah, and if you look at, there's a table in the top right corner. Majority of that, the symbol say gravel mulch, rock mulch. Um, there's gonna be, I think a little bit of sod. Is there gonna be a little bit of sod on this, Mr. Brown? I, I, now that I look at, I can't tell. Or is it all rock? Gravel, yeah, cause you have, that's what threw me off, concrete most rip. But then I don't see any sod planting in your key. Yeah. So, maybe it's just decorative, and they call it concrete most rip, but it's just a decorative most rip to differentiate between the two types of mulch, the gravel and the rock. Maybe that's what they're saying.
Okay, any other questions? Anybody?
I just have one quick question that I've, I've, I've been wondering. If you look at your very last page or at least your um, even maybe your um, imagery. There's a couple of references to trailside flats. Is that the, the assumed or preferred name for this project? Or is that just something that's been kicking around as a nickname that might be the name? Could you comment on that?
Currently, that's the name we're, we're kicking at. I mean, if we need to just define it at this point, that's what it would have.
It, it, it's fine. I just want to know going forward, cause obviously I'd like to maybe start naming it instead of calling it Riverdale Apartments at, yeah. So if that's the name, I'd like to start using that if I, if I could do that going forward. Okay.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion that we forward to the city council with a favorable recommendation. The final site plan for the proposed Riverdale apartment buildings located approximately six ninety west. Forty-four hundred south. With the stipulations that address concerns of city staff and city engineer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Michelle, will you? Hold the commission, please?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Brown. Um, I don't know. Why, do we even want to ask about discretionary items?
I, I realize that it, it maybe didn't need to be there. On the council uh, agenda, I'm glad you brought this up. On the council agenda, I noted that they put on their um, reports. I think they had a report by mayor, report by council, report by. City administrator, if there were any kind of last items that needed to be on there in lieu of discretionary items. I think if you have any reporting or you have any specific questions that you'd like me to. Take to staff and get back with the planning commissioner. That's probably appropriate based on guidance from, from our city attorney. But if we open up obviously something that becomes more of a um, agenda item, that's probably better just to bring it up out there. And then we can discuss it and then turn it and put it on the future agenda subject to the, the chair and vice chair's direction to do so. So. That's kind of the guidance we got at our strategic planning.
I do have one question for you on this, and you gave us.
Oh, yeah.
Are there any changes?
That, that document is more of a. Future land use planning tool as far as projects that are forthcoming, like areas where there's forthcoming projects. Um, R D A project areas where we're seeing still things going on or will see things going on. Roadway projects are, are what the, the yellow vehicle images it on there and those sorts of things. So that's more of a tool I gave to the, the planning commission and the city council. Of forthcoming things we will see and also things that may have impacts on the general plan update. As far as the, the next eight to ten year prospectus of the city. So that's what you're seeing in there. It's kind of a future land use guide. So the planning commissioner, you're, you get around where some of these things, some of these areas are gonna start to be developing and things are gonna start happening in those different aspects. And then one other one I put on there, I think is a park icon, cause those are areas where there's either some park development needs. And or areas of redevelopment that you may see in the future within the next eight to ten years.
That's the one with the tree and.
Uh-huh. Yeah. So that's just a kind of quick update from what was presented to the strategic planning meeting joint session. Yeah.
All right, thanks. Make the motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.